Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 12th zoning board hearing. Two minor housekeeping items. We have the minutes for the August 17th meeting that I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by John Mustriani. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John Dagny. All those in favor? Opposed? Others unanimous. That was the one that was -- we missed the last meeting. And we also have the September 14th minutes of that meeting. Do I have a motion on the September 14th minutes?
Motion.
Motion by John Mustriani. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, thank you. Just a quick note, so we can help Melissa out, paralegal and clerk for the zoning board. Let's try -- members try to make an effort to respond as soon as possible, so that she has an idea that we have a membership quorum. So when she sends out the email with the packages, we'd like to get a count of who is coming. You just have to respond, yes, I am coming, and no, I'm unable. And the sooner we do that, the better. That way there, she's got time to put the packages together on the amount of members that are going to be part of the hearing. So hopefully, that'll help a little bit. So with that, it's 7:05. Let's move on to the 7:05 hearing. And this is on the continued application of Pendolfo Company, Inc., Hill Box 1068, Burlington, Mass., for special permit and/or amendment to the existing special permit in relation to a parcel of land owned by May Park Corporation, which is 11 hours away in Milford. The parcel consists of 1.5 acres, more or less, located on the northwest-lee intersection of Route 140 and Green Street. The special permit is sought to permit the changes in the layout of the facilities on the property, so as to provide two stacking lanes and a bypass lane for entry into the facility and relocation of the parking lot and vacuum facilities. Please note that this is also a special permit. The application is indicating it's a special permit to transfer ownership. So with that, I believe counsel is here. And I've already read into the application on the last hearing. So you'll also find in your packages for reference the last conditions that the board -- the zoning board provided on the previous tenant or car wash that was occupying the facility. That also indicates the operating hours and the decision aspects on that particular decision. And this one here tonight, I'll have Attorney Pettenari go through the application. We could probably get a plan up if you have one.
I do.
What? Your whole packages? Okay, great. And why don't we do that? Okay. I'll reread the planning board's decision that was dated 8/10. The planning board did review the schedule -- the application. They voted favorable. And they're referring this back over. I will paraphrase on the notes from the planning board. The applicant requests a special permit approval to allow for the continued use of an existing drive-through car wash on the property. The prior 2016 special permit for this site was granted to the applicant Green Street Auto Spa only and did not run with the land. So the attached decision is attached to this. In addition, subsequently, the current operator acquired the business but did not seek an amendment to the special permit, and also proceeded to modify the site in violation of the approved site plan by adding vacuum stations in the queue lanes. The applicant now seeks to remedy all past violations by seeking the special permit for the current operator and by revising the site features to return the queuing lanes to an appropriate safe configuration. The original approved queuing lanes are to be restored, the vacuum station is relocated to the rear of the building, and a substantial area of excess pavement is to be removed and replaced with landscaping. Therefore, that was forwarded over to the zoning board for a favorable report. And with that, we'll turn it over to Attorney Pettenari.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client for many years, is the landlord of this property, May Park Corporation, Mark Rizzoli, his father Dick before him. And I'm also here on behalf of the current tenant in the property, and that's the Golden Nozzle Car Wash, who is represented by their engineer, Mr. Pendolfo. Mr. Pendolfo is here, and the operations manager of Golden Nozzle is here as well. His name is Ryan Roberts. You're all familiar with what happened at the last meeting. There's enough of a concern here that it's probably a good idea to start fresh with the presentation this evening. Suffice it to say that there was a snafu in understanding what the zoning was with regard to the special permit use of the car wash on the site. And that turned into conversations between Mr. Pendolfo and the planning department in order to try to make improvements to the site. But oops, the omission of the special permit was something that had not been considered until they realized they needed to do that. We are here tonight, as Larry has said, and I find it very, very heartwarming that I'm quoting Larry Duncan, to try to correct all those errors. So what you have in front of you is, and I see you're looking at the engineering that Mr. Pendolfo did, the top sheet that you're looking at was the configuration of what was proposed originally when the plan was done.
And then this is the copy of that?
Correct.
Okay.
No, that's not a copy of that. That's the copy that was submitted in connection with the zoning. But yes, that's a rendering of what is there.
Okay.
Okay. So the second page is some revisions that were made immediately after the last meeting. And the third page is revisions that were made after consultations with me during the last couple of weeks. So what you're looking at, then, would be best represented by the third page of this engineering that is presented on, I guess it's page three, where the configuration of the parking and the vacuums in the back of the building is changed, so that it's angle parking rather than head-in parking, as it had previously been. The number of spaces is reduced to 17. The other thing that you're looking at on page three is the connection of the vacuum system, which is connected now inside the building in the garage bays that were discussed by your board members and some of the abutters last time they were here. And those changes that are going to be made to put those mechanics into those garage bays will include soundproofing and will include complete removal of any noise factors from the vacuums for the abutters to be concerned with. So the overall gist of what Mr. Pendolfo has done is there is significant improvement from phase one of the engineering presented to the board in connection with its application to the engineering that we're presenting this evening. The queuing lanes are now restored, which they were not, because the vacuums were located in the front of the building, and that was causing concerns on behalf of the planner and on behalf of some of the neighbors in the area, because what that did is it created queuing onto Green Street, which is something that they're working very, very hard now to try to avoid. They have preserved the travel lane in past appearances before the board. Those were required by the fire chiefs at the time, and that is still a functioning fire lane, but it's also a travel lane around both queuing lanes to get people who may want to use just the vacuum facility at the site around to the back of the building, so that they can use it. The other question that arose in connection with the abutters' concerns was the ability to communicate concerns about excessive noise or other conduct on the site. Mr. Roberts has brought cards here, which he's authorized me to give to you, so that you can incorporate them into the decision. But they have a full-time customer relations department, and they can handle complaints immediately. Mr. Roberts is a person who is on the site frequently. He reports that he's never seen the kind of problems that were related at the last zoning board meeting, but he recognizes that he is not there all the time, but this is the device that they use. And to the extent that they want to make sure that you understand they're willing to work with you, I've been authorized to offer these cards, so that it can be incorporated into a part of the decision. The last thing that I want to address in passing is there's been some question of hours of operation. And the hours of operation under the old permit were from, I think, 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night. The key one is the 5:00 at night one. But I was here both times previous to this time. And the second time previous to this was when Easy Way Car Wash came in, and they had a Class II license associated with the car wash. That generated some concerns about their -- the time -- the operating hours to be involved on the site. And the next time was when Mr. DeRusso came in, and he got the special permit amended to authorize him to sell small motors and lawn care service kinds of machinery. That also, I think, contributed directly to the hours of operation being set where they were for that particular zoning decision. Both Ryan and Mr. Pendolfo report that there have been some concerns since the hours of operations were changed and the vacuums were disconnected, expressed by people who are regular customers. And they're concerned that that puts them at a competitive disadvantage, because the other car wash in the town of Milford is operating from 7:00 to 7:00. We understand that it's within your jurisdiction and discretion to set the hours of operation, but we're just looking for whatever consideration you can give, knowing three things. The first thing is that the traffic situation is going to be markedly improved by the reconfiguration of the queuing lanes, that the noise situation is going to be markedly improved by the installation of the vacuum systems, which, by the way, are going to be turned off from inside the building when the car wash itself is closed. And the third thing is the discontinuance of the repair bays, because that area is going to be where the mechanics for the vacuum system would be put. They will be closed up. Only one small entry door provided, and they will be soundproofed. So their position is that they believe that they understand and acknowledge that they made an error at the beginning of their relationship with the town of Milford, but they believe that since hearing the concerns that were expressed a few weeks ago, they have addressed them, and I am presenting them to you for your consideration. They're both here. They're both very conversant with the way the business is run. They can answer any of the day-to-day operational questions you might have, and I'm certainly here to answer any of the zoning issues.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Pettenari. It's nice to see that this is starting to get proactive instead of reactive.
Thank you.
Yep. So I'm just going to make a couple of notes, and then I'm going to turn it over to the board members for any comments. The reason that the hours of operation was originally put into this property was there's a difference between a residentially zoned parcel and a commercial zoned parcel. You have residents in that area, both across the street, around the back, and I understand it's still on a major -- next to a major route. The other car washes are in commercial zones, and clearly, they don't have residential houses that are directly above. So that is my comment concerning and our discussions moving forward on the hours of operation, but I wanted to get that clearly out there. It's nice to see -- I still have a -- I'm hearing some things tonight from a couple of board members that actually either went into the car wash or went by the car wash over the last four or five days, and the vacuums are still operating, and they have no license to do so. So that kind of perturbed me a little bit when I heard that.
No, they're --
Do you have any other comments with that?
Well, this gentleman here at our last meeting -- yeah, this gentleman right here. You told us at the last meeting that those vacs will be shut off tomorrow.
Yes, I did.
And four to five days after that meeting, I was by there, and the vacuums were full. Six, five, six, seven cars. So that never happened. They never got shut down immediately.
Right.
So -- Go ahead.
No. I told you that, and I told whoever I -- it took them a little bit to get down. Not Ryan, but they -- I said, "You've got to shut these down," and they did. I'm not sure when they did.
They actually --
They were shut down shortly after. We actually just got a complaint today from somebody saying they've been shut down for quite a while, and they took a picture, the customer, and sent it to our office, that they're concerned why the vacuums are still shut down. And obviously said, "We're working with the --"
I got an email that had a sign on it that they were shut down.
Yeah, yeah.
But when I was notified tonight that over the last five days, those were operating, I want clarity. That's all.
Oh, yeah. No, they were --
They were shut down Wednesday. I was in there Wednesday. There was two vehicles. Were they just parked there?
They probably just parked there. Yeah. Because what's happening is people unnaturally are going in there because they're used to vacuuming, and they've always been on, and they pull up, and they're, you know, looking to see why the vacuums aren't on. So it'll appear that people are actually vacuuming, but then they end up leaving. Or they come inside looking for us, saying, "Why aren't the vacuums on?" Even though there's signs out there, sometimes you go to read the signs.
Great. All right. Thank you.
I just want to answer John's question. I can only add that when I got involved, I communicated to, I guess, is he your boss?
Yeah.
He's your boss?
Richard Smith?
Yeah.
Yes.
I communicated to his boss that it was not prudent for the vacuums to remain in operation. And he said to me, "They'll be closed tomorrow." And I got confirmation that they were closed the day he said they would be closed. So -- and I won't pretend that I wrote down there and investigated it personally, but I got a picture of the sign that said, "Closed until further notice." So it happened as close to immediately as possible. I wasn't here the first time, but I think the message is getting there.
The message did get there, albeit very late. I'm a frequent flyer down there. I'll be the first to admit.
You too.
Okay? And they were not shut down immediately, and they were not shut down for at least five to seven days after fact.
And that makes sense, because I think I spoke to Richard on the Monday --
We're just going by your promise.
Yeah.
It wasn't done.
All right. So let me make a couple more comments on the third --
Mr. Chairman, I have another question.
Go ahead, John.
Also, at our last meeting, the abutters that were here complained about the workers and the yelling and the vulgarities, and I don't hear anything about that being addressed. Who should be outside? Who should be working? When they'll be out there? You know, how is that workers going to be overseen?
Well, if I --
Go ahead.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
So we have a manager on site that works there five to five days a week. We have an assistant manager that works there, and that manager's day off as well, and five days a week, to monitor the ongoings of the car wash operations. I personally received a call from one of the neighbors complaining about what you were just speaking about. We addressed it immediately. My district manager went down there, had a meeting with all the employees, and addressed it with everyone there, that there is to be no swearing, yelling, or any kind of, you know, acting in that manner. And it was addressed as soon as possible. And then that district manager called the neighbor to make sure that they were, you know, satisfied, and if there was any other complaints, that they would reach out to them right away, to make sure that doesn't ever happen again. So we are proactively on it.
And one of the things that I mentioned is the cards that he gave me tonight are for a woman by the name of Lisa Starnes. And the suggestion was made by them that if the board chose to, they could incorporate her name and number into its decision for the abutters to know that they make that phone call. And if that's not rectified, then that gives the board the authority to enforce whatever
Is that something that can be enacted on a weekend as well? Because if you're at an office, and the office is closed on Saturday and Sunday, what next?
So they can call into that voicemail, but what we can do is we can give them another number for the weekend to call, so I can supply that to them.
Yeah. There definitely has to be a weekend contact.
Okay.
I am sure that between managers and assistant managers, I'm sure there's a fast turnover, and it's probably a cost and struggle with all that turnover and people not doing what they're supposed to be doing a month later. And that's the retraining aspect that's your responsibility, to make sure that everybody continues to be on the same page.
Absolutely.
So there'll be something continued conditioned on that.
Okay. Sure.
Do you have another question, John?
No.
I just wanted to bring up a couple of things on the site plan. So I'm not sure 18 feet is wide enough, Ernie, for the fire truck, for fire apparatus?
I don't have any engineering acumen, but --
Don't tell me it is, because I can tell you right now, I'm in the middle of a common driveway, and the fire chief wants 20 feet for a common driveway to get to a piece of property. So 18 feet seems to be not adequate enough for a fire truck to come around --
Yeah, the turning radius. That's I asked.
The old one had 24 feet. The original one had 24 feet.
Right.
Not only a turning radius, but you have -- if you have cars --
On both sides.
On both sides. Guess what two cars backing up at the one is going to do?
Yeah.
There's going to be a ton of accidents there.
Can I just respond to that, please? So the only reason we closed it down was at 24 feet, 90-degree parking. So it, like, in a, you know, shopping center, when it's 90 degrees, you have to have 24 feet. But we looked at this and said, "I wanted to move it even more so away from the neighbors," so we closed it down to 18 feet. We can go back up to 20 feet.
Safety is more important than anything.
Right.
So I'm letting you know that it'll probably go back to that, only because the fire chief's going to need that. We've got some big, heavy equipment.
Yeah. And my thought here tonight was, though, whatever you say, then we have to have the professional plan --
There's definitely going to be an engineered plan.
Then go to the engineer. I mean, go to the planning board, because we're going to need that. So that's very easy. But 45-degree parking, you don't need -- it's much easier. When you pull in, you line up much better, and then you just back out.
I realize that.
Well, we can give you the 20 feet, no problem. I just did that because of -- we've taken up a ton of asphalt now. We're really --
Well, just so you know, okay, let me speak, and I'll tell you what we're going to probably go down this road. We're going to need a full re-engineered site plan. And that is the decision tonight is going to be predicated on that site plan being approved by the planning board.
Right.
That we there, that's their purvey, and they'll -- they can run that vote, because I'm sure there's going to have to be -- I see a dumpster location here. And again, it looks like it was on the last location. I don't know if it's still there. But I'm just trying to make that comment to you. And the last comment I'm going to make, there is absolutely no way I'm going down the road in 19 vacuums. That's just my opinion. So I'll turn it over to the board members, because those are some of the comments that I have. And Bobby, I'll start on you. I say --
Yeah. Right now, there are eight vacuums?
Seven.
Seven vacuums. And you're going to almost triple that. I just see a cluster with those amount of vacuums and those amount of parking spaces. And once again, David said, "That's the planning board," but that's an awful lot of vacuums, albeit that the noise control will be controlled from the inside. I'm agreeing with David, with the amount of vacuums need to be reduced even more.
And can I just ask a question from a procedural point of view? It would be my expectation, although I don't know if this is where you want to go, it would be my expectation that if you're going to vote a number of vacuums, that's going to govern regardless of what the planning board preference would be, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. You know.
That's different from me. You have seven vacuums there now?
Correct.
Well, they're -- first of all --
I know.
The last permit had none.
I know.
So whatever vacuums are there, they're illegal.
I know, but I'm trying to make a point. I go there all the time, and I've never seen a backlog of people in line waiting to vacuum their vehicle. So why do you need to put this many more vacuums in?
Cash.
Well, there is --
They're free.
They're free. Yeah, they're free. No, it's more of a convenience thing for people. I know maybe you can go there when there's people waiting. We do sometimes have people waiting for the vacuums.
Well, that's why you have so many, because it's free. Why don't you put a coin into that? You're not going to need 19.
That's for sure.
Right?
Let me ask you a question.
But that's our whole thing. That's how we use it.
If in the event --
Come on.
Just, again, I know it's still a big number. It's 17 on the latest iteration of the --
I just counted 16, but --
Okay.
But in the event that all these vacuums are being used at the same time, these people are leaving as they finish vacuuming, you've got cars coming out of the blower. Who's going to -- I see an accident waiting to happen here. You know they're going to zip out of there and just piss right through.
Oh, shh.
Zip right through while another car's coming out, not knowing that car's coming, because the blowers are going, and you can't hear. What's going to stop that from -- I should say, what's going to stop it from definitely happening down the road?
Joe, would you --
Now, how would you handle that? You're not going to put a patrol boy there.
So as far as the number of vacuums, so that whole site got messed up by the --
Okay. Let's put aside the vacuums. Let's go back to as people leave --
No, I know exactly.
People coming through here.
Yeah.
And you've got this guy over here, who's going to zip down and come right out, and the car's coming out of here.
Right.
How are you going to solve it?
We're going to have to figure that out, because --
You know it's going to happen.
No, I know.
We're going to push stops. I'm going to put stop signs there.
Well, that always works.
Well, did it --
Because, but see, it was always that way, though, because when these were all being used, it was always that way. But we can definitely look at that and do something.
You don't have any cars coming around, right?
We're going to put that on the --
I don't know.
We can talk it --
It's a different kind of --
No, I don't know, because I don't know what was going on.
A lot more of it.
Yeah, nothing, really.
Okay.
And the only thing I was saying is, by now, this -- these vacuums messed up the whole site. No question.
We understand that.
They're gone. Now, if someone wants to just come in and use the vacuums, they can circle around, use them, and leave, and not get in this line.
Right. So let me ask you a minute. How many cars --
Want to see.
How many cars are going to be in this queue? How many going to hold?
We've got plenty. We've got plenty in the queue. No question.
Okay. Then when they come out of the vacuum area, they want to go to the queue, and the queue's already filled. Where are they going to go?
The queue won't be filled.
To wash after vacuuming? They're going to have to get in the first available queue?
It's a bypass right there.
That's why they did the two of them.
Yeah. If this -- if these two queues are filled, waiting to go in, and they're coming out of the vacuum --
Right now, it hasn't changed from the last one.
I know, but if they're coming out of the vacuum area, and it's full, they can't park here.
They're not parking here. They're leaving the site.
If these are filled --
He's criticizing they won't be leaving.
And they're coming into the car wash queue, and the queue's filled, where do they go?
That's not our problem. That's planning board.
It's not our problem.
It's not our problem.
Okay.
We're dealing with a special permit that's already existing.
I understand. Well, then, is parking, is the amount of vacuums not our problem either, then?
No. The amount of vacuums, we're under condition. There's no question. That'll reduce a lot.
That's a lot.
Why don't we move on to other questions? We'll continue with that discussion, David. Any comments you want to give me? John?
Yeah, my question is, how are you going to -- how are you going to make cars make that turn into the garage bay? I go there all the time, twice a week, and I have a pickup truck, and I've got to hug the fence. So once I'm hugging the fence, that travel lane, it no longer exists.
You're talking about if you were in the middle --
It does.
-- of the stacking lane, John?
John, here's the --
No, no, I'm just saying, I know it doesn't matter. I know how, when I drive in, I have to pull all the way close to the fence to make that --
You have to pull into the bypass area.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So that's going to happen quite often, so that bypass lane --
The question about it, and the problem with that is, that was originally before us. That was approved with their special permit.
No, no, I know that, but --
So I know, so we can't -- you can't get in there if you don't do that. I totally understand that.
Yep.
And I even talked to Ryan today about it. Maybe if we can make the door, entrance door, even wider to the right side to make that swing, but the only way they could do it is have something there before you make that swing, so that you don't want that bypass to get clogged.
Yeah, like I said, I'm just saying that that bypass could get clogged if there's --
If they don't control it.
-- three pickup trucks in a row.
They don't control it. No question.
Yep.
And that's something that maybe we ought to have the engineer look at.
You're talking about Liz, or you're talking about John?
It's part of our decision. The planning board's going to want a full plan.
Yep.
So in coordination with our decision, submit to the planning board. Planning board can dive into this, and their engineers, of course, and to see if there's anything that we can rectify and help.
Okay. So we would be looking at consultations with the fire chief on fire equipment --
Correct.
-- and the town engineer on the turning radius for pickup trucks.
Right. And also, the exit coming out of the vacuum areas, I think there's going to have to be some type of stop sign or something similar to what we --
I think Mark's right. I think there ought to be some kind of control on that, and I don't think that that's a question.
Because that's just the amount of vacuums is going to create way, way too much traffic.
There's always going to be somebody that'll rush to fly out of there.
Coming out of there, so --
And my earliest experience with this site was, there were complaints about the winter weather. It used to have a lot of water. Now, they've controlled most of the water, so that's not a problem anymore. But that was way back in one of my prior lifetimes. I remember sitting in this room, talking about when the puddles would freeze. So, yeah, you're right. I mean, traffic on that site has got to be controlled, and they know that. And I guess the point of me being here and Ryan being here is to let everybody know that they recognize there's work to be done, but yet, they want to make sure that you know that they're committed to doing this and doing it right.
And I want to make this comment. I want to make sure I'm clear on the comment. The reason that the site is being overtaxed is because of the vacuums. Okay? The implementation of those vacuums has created a problem on the site. So it's even more [inaudible 00:08:19]. So, it's even more imperative that we have a proper plan and limit the amount of vacuums on this site. And maybe it's not reducing the site, maybe it's leaving it where it was before.
Pavement.
Pushing those vacuums further down against that area. So, that way there, you're not reducing pavement, but again, I, I get the idea concerning the reduction of payment concerning the, the site as well, under the guidelines of, of, of coverage.
So, all the vacuums are against the permit?
We got them against the building, too.
Against the building, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can say something about the vacuums, one, one thing that we found is, if you have the board vacuums, you actually are gonna have less issues with traffic, because I know that you had mentioned, you know, that you don't see.
Let me tell you something, there was a cluster, there was a cluster when I went by there, when you had the vacuums against the building. And all these people pulling in and pulling out, and a lot of the traffic going to the car wash, there was a cluster.
Absolutely, and that's why we wanna make sure the plan is, is best fit for everybody. If we have more vacuums, you're gonna have less app for congestion, especially when you go around the back of the building, because if we do get busy, and there's people waiting for vacuums, that's where the cluster happens, and that's why we put in as many vacuums as we can for the customers, so that if there's many open spots, they can go in, and it doesn't create a cluster. And I think if you limit us, you're gonna create a cluster rather than get rid of a cluster of traffic.
And you know what, maybe this is the discussion, and maybe this is a situation where we provide a temporary special permit to allow your use, subject to a fully engineered plan that is, that is drafted and submitted through the planning board, and then we'll provide a temporary primitive operations until you guys can get all this engineering done. That may be the best way to go, so everything's addressed properly.
That makes sense, the only question I have is, is it the pleasure of the board that you not condition the numbers of vacuums before that data is available, or are you gonna do it?
As long as there's no vacuums operating, then we won't condition anything with vacuums, because there won't be anything operating right now.
Okay, so you're asking them to, that's why I wanted to ask that question.
That way, that way they would, it behooves them to get the engineering done as soon as possible.
Okay.
To be able to get it back in front of the planning board, so that they can show, if they need these vacuums, everything can flow and is done safely.
So, you're suggesting, though, that they operate without vacuums during this pendency period?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, I think that's reasonable, but it doesn't matter what I think.
Either that, or you can, we give you six, and that's it.
Well, and again, if, if you give us.
Don't shake your head.
No, 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 I'm not shaking it to you. I wasn't shaking it to you.
I'm just.
I wasn't shaking, I'm sorry.
You've been operating for three years illegally, so.
If you give us.
You want to do this right.
Me too, we do too.
If you give us six, with the understanding that that could be recalculated pending the resolution of the fully engineered site plan, I don't think that's a crazy idea either, if that's where the board's going.
That, that, if the board's okay with that, I'd be, I'd be here in a three and two.
How many vacuums are we talking, anyway?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay.
That way there, you get what you need to get operating legally, and it also provides the incentive to get the proper engineering done, get it to the planning board, let them make the comment between the town engineer and the planning board, so that, we've got a site plan that can at least try to work.
And, and your point would be that you would consider that at that point, with a simple application to amend.
To amend the existing position, the existing condition, yeah.
I, I don't think there's anything unfair about it personally, but that's.
When they come out here, they gotta slow down, and then they slow down.
Okay, we do.
Yep.
So, so, is there anybody that wants to be heard before we close this, in the audience?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
John and I were just discussing, to address what Mark was talking about, people coming around the corner of that building.
When someone's coming out of the bay.
Yeah. What about the possibility of?
Speed bump.
Two speed bumps, yeah.
Just to slow people down.
Is a temporary solution, we can do that, and then.
Good idea.
I was thinking that, we could definitely do that, and there.
So that there's cars come around that side there before they enter the area.
And a stop sign.
Where the cars are.
Yeah.
Well, stop sign, I don't think does anything, but.
Maybe one of those mirrors, too, that you put there that reflects it, too, you can see.
And, and, and I mean, the speed bumps could be, could be the rubble ones even, so that if the, the, the location that we think where they should go doesn't work, then they can be moved.
Can I just ask one question before we close? Am I interrupting anyone else? Can I ask one question before you, you close up? Can we talk about the hours of operation a little bit more broadly?
Yep.
Because you're right that it's a, it's a residential neighborhood, but, we're talking about temporary arrangement here. So, is it completely off the table that you would entertain hours of operation a little bit beyond 5 o'clock? 5 o'clock is, is apparently the cutoff, and that's where Ryan reports, he's getting lots of complaints from customers, saying they like to get their cars washed on the way home from work, and they can't if it closes at 5:00. So, is that completely off the table, is that the pleasure of the board?
No, and I think we can work with the hours of operation, but it's gonna reflect down to a noise aspect.
Correct.
And, and that type of stuff. So, from a temporary standpoint, I'm okay to extend, I personally, I think I'm okay to extend it. I get concerned when we get into that 7:00 PM timeframe with noise, if the vacuums clearly is not soundproofing, so.
Well, the noise factor was the vacuums, correct?
Yeah, except they can't change the noise factor on the vacuums until they get the site plan finalized, because closing off that bay.
But, the vacuums are gonna be shut down anyway, correct?
When, when they close.
After closing.
That's then.
They are now, though, right?
Yes.
They are now.
That's what I'm saying, they're off now.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they're off now.
So, by the time we go through a site plan, this, that, and everything else, they're staying off until this is.
No, we're gonna give them some time, uh.
I'm asking, I'm asking if you would, you'd concede that that's gonna hamstring them dramatically?
You're gonna turn them back on?
Correct.
So, at 6:30 work?
That's where I was gonna get at.
6:30 PM.
How about 7:00? You know, usually we're open till 8:00, but how about 7:00?
Listen, you wouldn't, you shouldn't be operating at 8:00 at night, 'cause the hours of operation will never be 8:00 at night.
Okay, okay, I get it.
Depending on the board if they want, if they're.
I don't have a 7:00 to try it?
I don't have a problem with 7:00.
I don't have a problem, honestly.
Apparently you have a lot of customers here, I don't know.
You should stay competitive.
Right, cool, so I think we're hindering.
We don't wanna hurt your business.
There are some valid complaints.
David, I just gotta ask a question, so, are we gonna allow them to keep the vacuums that they have operational until?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna give them anywhere between 6:00 and 10:00 temporarily.
No, he means.
Not on that location, no.
Now, now they have 7:00, they're gonna keep them at 7:00.
And, and you're gonna turn those back on.
Correct.
You're shutting down.
They're not using the vacuums in the front.
That's what, that's what we're talking about.
They're gonna use them in the back.
They don't have any in the back.
They don't have any in the back.
Guys, the reason that you're here is you're operating illegally, and you put vacuums in illegally, and you got them in the queuing and fire lanes. You're not gonna have them there. If you wanna move some piping around the back and put 7:00 or 10:00 back there temporarily, you can do that.
I think the best thing to do is, like you said, we can right away get a plan done, come back in and address it.
Where's the vacuums currently right now?
They're right up against the front of the building. And they're in the queuing lane, I mean, it's.
Yeah, they're right in the stacking lane.
Yeah.
And you know what's gonna happen when we get into cold weather?
I do.
In the snow.
Yeah.
Traffic's gonna double, and then those vacuums are gonna.
But they're not gonna be there.
No, they're saying to temporarily have them until they get an engineered plan.
How long's it gonna take?
Well, I'd be okay if they move them to the back.
How long's it gonna take?
That's gonna be a ton of work for them.
That's gonna be a week.
Right.
That's unreasonable.
It's already done, so you just have to, one week.
How long's it gonna take to put the vacuums in the back?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a whole process.
How long?
Stop the timeframe.
We're gonna put footings down.
We're gonna five weeks.
Cause it'll shut them down.
So, it'll be before.
Yeah, see, that's the.
They won't adhere to it.
How long's it gonna take to come back with another plan, with the engineered plan?
The engineer, because he has a.
We're not gonna see snow, we're not gonna see sleet, we're not gonna see.
We wanna get this done as soon as possible.
Okay, so they will, they get it, I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with the vacuums, is what I'm saying, I don't have a problem with the vacuums.
Either that, and we'll, we give you the vacuums to the end of November, okay? Period, end of story, and then it shuts off November 30th, unless you have a plan in here to the planning board that's been approved. But, those vacuums would be shut off.
Reasonable.
November 30th. On that side, or November.
30th.
30th, yep.
Do the 31st.
That way there, we're, we're being a little flexible, and you've got some work to get done.
Pass one question on the traveling.
Don't ask for any more, though.
If you, if it doesn't matter, then that 4, 5, I'll go back, we wanna leave them at an angle, but we'll open that up wider, we'll go back, I only closed that down to get it even more away from the, but we'll leave it at 24, but still have them on a 45, 'cause it's much better just to back out and leave.
You're gonna be submitting an engineered plan to the planning board, they're gonna drive the boat on what they want from there. So, you show that, you show what you wanna do, and then from that standpoint, the planning board's gonna, gonna dissect it and get some verification from town council, not town council, from the town engineer and the planning board, and that's gonna be part of the temporary condition.
Okay.
So, if you have anything else, then I will close the hearing.
I just wanna ask one question, 'cause I don't understand the process. We're gonna go back, we're gonna create that plan, we're gonna submit that plan to the planning board.
Correct.
While that plan is going through the pipeline through the planning board, they will be operating under a special permit, which is gonna be specifically named a temporary special permit.
Correct.
Which will toll, which will end on the 30th of November.
Correct.
And in the meantime, they will remain in the configuration they're in, using the vacuums they're in, and once the board votes, there will be an establishment of operating hours. That's all subject to change by an amendment to that special permit after the planning board has approved the site plan.
Correct.
My question is, what if we don't get action from the planning board in that timeframe? Can we extend it if that, if it's not on any fault there?
We'll give you one extension.
Okay, we have to ask for it.
That we'll, we'll build in 130-day extension.
Okay.
Because I don't wanna start getting in the middle of winter.
I agree.
In snow, and these, and these vacuums operating.
Got it.
On that side of the building, 'cause then it's gonna be too dangerous.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if you're gonna give them a 30-day extension, you're gonna put stipulation as to why you're gonna grant it. Not just, well, we didn't get the, we didn't get the.
No, only if, only if we're in the, in the planning board queue and we're not getting through it.
No, they didn't get through it here.
It's incumbent upon us to get the amended site plan to the planning board by the end of this month.
In a timely fashion.
Yeah.
But if the planning board can't get to you, then the.
Correct, that's my only fear. Yeah, that's my only fear.
If you don't get to that, then the extension does not kick in.
Right.
Is it all right if I go to the neighbors and, I don't want the neighbors to think, oh, heck, well, you guys.
They already hate you.
That was gonna be my next comment, is that.
And tell them that.
We're increasing their hours, and we're really doing a disservice to the abutters, because now the vax are gonna go back on, you wanna go back and stay open till 6:30, the abutters are gonna say, nothing's changed.
Well.
Well, they were open till 8:00.
What?
They were open till 8:00.
There's gonna be something changed, because I don't know any of the facts behind it, but I've always learned in all the years I've been doing this, that when the abutters come in, there's usually a kernel of truth to their complaints, and you're not gonna hear those complaints again. Ryan has promised that, and that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, 'cause I believe him. I do think they're gonna be absolutely proactive in dealing with any potential nonsense on the site, from workers, suppliers, material men, et cetera. And I think that's one way that the abutter situation will be alleviated. So, to the extent that they are derivative of the noise from the machines and the traffic, et cetera, you're right, John, it's not going to change systematically, but to the extent that they're derivative of misbehavior by personnel or customers, that is gonna change. And to the extent that it happens, I don't know.
I think what this gentleman just started to say was, he was gonna reach out to the abutters.
Correct.
And I'll show them that.
And I think that's a good idea, I think that's something you need to do.
Because that third plan really will solve all the problems, and I want them to say that, we're gonna do this, but because of this, we have to go back and do this. I think I should do that to the neighbors.
It's just that this is a temporary situation so you can get a proper...
Yeah, they have to know that.
Proper engineered plan done, but in the meantime, this gives you the right to fully operate and we're just going to put some time constraints on it.
Were your abutters notified of this meeting?
Yeah, I was actually advertising.
I have the list of abutters and I will work with them to create some kind of a notice to the abutters about what the proposal will be relative to the planning board and how to get in touch with Joe Pandolfo to have any questions answered. And to the extent that we can identify the abutters who were here last month, Joe can reach out to them, again, proactively so that he can do it in the first instance.
I think they should be notified before this...
Where is the motors for the vacuums currently?
The existing ones? That motor is inside, so you do not hear that when it's outside.
Is that at the exit where the cars come out?
No, that's up in the front area of the car wash where you pull around. Right in that building there.
You're going to need to come up with a mechanism because I'm going to condition it. You need to have a door. An operating door coming out. That thing is not going to be open all day long.
Are you talking about the end of the car wash with the dryers, are you saying?
You've got to have some type of mechanism to control that because that's where all the noise is coming from, from the blowers.
So we do have, well, see, that's going to be, that's going to be hard though because when you have cars coming through on a constant basis, that door will not have enough time to, that we're able to do that. Like your, like your west order.
Then the residents should not be there listening to blowers at 8 o'clock at night. They should not be. So right now...
Well, the good thing is, is it slows down at night, especially at night now because they have to turn out.
Well, not in the middle of it, not in the middle of the, when we get these storms and we get a couple of decent days and people come in from work at 6 o'clock and they want to get through the car wash.
We're telling them, operation ceases at 6:30, so they're not going at 8 o'clock.
I think we said seven, right? Seven?
No, I think six, let's try 6:30. If you need to amend it, we'll take a look at it then. So currently, right now, what I have for conditions. It is predicated on the ownership and the applicant submitting a full engineered site plan. We'll work with the town engineer concerning all of the engineering when it comes to the stacking lanes, the bypass lanes. And this includes working on the entrance, maybe moving that door in the entrance because clearly we cannot make those turns with a pickup truck. It seems to be it has to go in the bypass lane. So I'd like to have the engineers take a look at turning the, those trucks turning into the car wash itself from the queuing lanes. In addition to that, again, the fire department will probably recommend a minimum of 20 feet around the aisles. The current vacuums right now, which are seven, will be allowed to operate. And the hours of operation, my suggestion would be from 8 until 6:30.
No, I think we all said seven, David, at the beginning.
Seven in the morning?
No, seven at night.
Seven at night, yeah. It was, we did agree on that.
We did agree to seven.
Well, again, this is temporary, so...
I think, yeah.
So it'll be 8:00 AM Monday through Saturday, where you want seven days a week. The last decision was Monday through Saturday.
Right.
Was, was, was 8 to 5, so we're going Monday through Saturday, 8 to 7 PM. And Sunday, there's no reason to stop before 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock.
Yeah, we, we open at 8:00 AM on Sundays.
No, you don't understand. We set the hours, you don't set the hours.
No, no, I know that.
Last operation was 9 o'clock on Sunday.
Oh, no, I was trying to tell you, I was just trying to...
Yes, you were. You were operating, you were operating at that...
Yes, I apologize.
So what was the, what's your pleasure on Sundays for hours? What do you, and again, you know these blowers are going off and it's wide open there. So these residents, Sunday morning at 8 o'clock...
How long has it been a car wash in that, this location?
That's been there a long time.
Roland Fanta Roney opened it in 1984.
Okay. It's been there a long time.
Crystal Clean Car Wash.
And after that, the property was owned by an amalgam of...
It's been a car wash.
Yep. And then since the Rizzolis have owned it, it was the Shains, the Russo, and Ellen Nash.
It's been a car wash. It's been a car wash.
Since 1984.
Okay.
The year Leah was born.
There's going to be noise from a car wash.
It's a residential zoned lot.
It's been there since 1984.
I understand that. But it's a residential lot.
And how many of these residents bought the property after 84?
Well, anyways, so if you want to do, just, these are temporary. They're going to have to come back for final amendments. So if you want to try the 8 o'clock on Sunday...
I have no problem with 8 o'clock on Sunday.
Is the board okay with us? I just want to make sure the opening time, Monday through Saturday, is 7:00 AM, is that...
8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday currently. Is what we're suggesting for temporary hours. And then Sunday, we're discussing, what are we, what are we looking to do on Sunday?
8 o'clock.
Do I do 8? Let's do 8 to 5? 5, what did we have the last time? We had 5 on Sunday. All right, so that'll be Sunday, 8 to 5 PM. Along with the, we also have the recommendation to put a stop sign, excuse me, and two speed bumps, they can be rubber, on the side, which side is this?
That'll be after, David, I believe, once the new plan is set in place and...
I think John's right. I think you want that as a condition.
I think we're going to stipulate those.
We can put that in, as a condition when the engineered plan comes out.
Correct, because there's no point in doing the stop sign if there's not going to be any vehicular traffic behind the site.
And there'll be, there'll be no, there'll be no car detailing...
Inside.
Inside whatsoever. And also, we will have the contact information, 24-hour contact information for Monday through Friday and also Saturday and Sunday, that the building department and legal department has contact information.
You want to give me current numbers rather than give them these cards?
I can just give you my cell phone number. Call me directly. Yeah, the weekend is outside.
Take a look here. This is all going to be just grass or whatever the case may be, right? You don't want to bring them any closer than any of the residents.
That's all, that's planning board engineers doing that right now.
Does it get an 18-foot opening?
Forget that plan. That plan means nothing because it's probably going to end up going back to this. The planning board will have control over that.
So they'll back into each other when they come out? You've got two lanes that come down.
The planning board's a planning board.
In the unlikely event it's totally full.
Okay, so with that, would you like me to repeat the conditions one more time? So your clarity. So currently, right now, the applicant's going to provide an engineered site plan. We'll work with the town engineer and the town planner to coordinate. Usually a couple of meetings or one meeting with both to get collectively, would get that done on what they needed to do. The current operating hours would be Monday through Saturday, 8 to 7 PM, and Sunday, 8 to 5 PM. The engineers will also take a look on the turning lane or the queuing and turning lane for trucks entering the car wash and whether or not that entrance garage door needs to be widened in order to accommodate, accommodate that turn concerning the fire lane around the building. Clearly, the fire chief will have to get involved and I'm sure it's going to be anywhere between 20 and 24 feet. So we will, we will leave that up to the engineers, the town planner, and the planning board along with the fire chief. The, there'll be no automotive detailing whatsoever in the rest of the building at all. And we will await a final engineered plan before they come back to do a final amended special permit.
Do you want to incorporate this?
And we will incorporate the contact information provided by Mr. Patnari for during the day and then the weekends is on the back. So with that, motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mark, who has a second. Second by John. All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. I want to thank Mr. Pine for providing his notes and writing as he's having a little difficulty tonight speaking.
Do I have to go make an Ovina?
Something, something going on. Thank you. Appreciate that. I will put these in the file.
And we will see you again.
Gentlemen, thank you. Thanks for being proactive. We appreciate it.
John, thank you.
Nice to finally come back and get this done. Thank you. You got all of those conditions?
Don't worry about her, David.
No, I know she is. Okay, with that, this is on the next app, is this the second application, by the way? Yeah, this is on the application of Alvaro Carrasco. Did I spell it Carrasco? Is that how you pronounce it? Carrasco? That's okay. 784 North Carey Street, Brockton, for a special permit relief in sections Article 3 of the zoning bylaws in relation to a 5,400 plus or minus square foot lot, parcel of land located on the Eastly side of South Main Street, known and numbered as 18 South Main Street. The subject property is currently owned by Lima Enterprises LLC, Reuben Lima, manager of 41 Alfred Street in Knoford. The special permit relief is sought in order to allow the demolition of a second floor on the premises, creating a new roof line to providing additionally usable space for the existing second floor. Is Reuben here? You're Reuben? Okay, thank you. All right, on the application, by the way, in your folder, there should be building plans. Here is a big set. The town has this assessed as two bedrooms each floor with a total of nine rooms. We know currently what's on the property. There is a two-car detached garage. And I have an understanding, it looks to me from the outside, that there's a deck in the two-family that's actually connected with a second story of the garage. So with that, the applicant states that the project does not increase the nonconformity existing nature of the property. The proposed use of the premises will let create any undue traffic congestion of pedestrian safety. The applicant states the existing two-family house will remain two families and does not pose potential increased traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Concerning the question, the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazards affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. The proposed project does not seek to expand the existing footprint of the building. The design of the project is simple, sound, and harmonious to the surrounding neighborhood. The building will remain a two-family house and will not increase bedrooms or bathrooms. I did notice on the plan, rooms have been expanded. So there's added rooms in the building, which I want to let you know right now I have a concern about because now we're going to, instead of four rooms on the second floor, we've got five, which one can easily turn into a bedroom, which we clearly are not going to go down that road. With that, it has gone to the planning board. The planning board did review this at their September 19 meeting and recommends the, a favorable recommendation. The town planner letter indicates that the applicant requests a special permit approval to allow for the reconstruction of a second floor of the existing nonconforming two-family dwelling on the subject property. The property is nonconforming as to lot area within the IRA zone. The proposal is to reconstruct the second floor with larger dormers to provide adequate seatation for second floor unit. The footprint of the existing structure will remain unchanged. Therefore, they recommend a favorable report be followed up to the zoning board. So with that, gentlemen, you have the floor and it looks, I think it's pretty standard of what you're trying to do, but why don't you tell, give us an idea why you're trying to do what you want to do? So is it, is it not enough room on the second floor? Are the ceilings too low? Or you just want to rebuild it?
So we just want to create more room.
Ceiling kind of like too low. If I make the second floor roof up, so the rooms going to be just, I don't know how, how high is it? But I want same level.
It's only six feet high up there. I've been up there.
So are you doing anything on the first floor? Are you doing any construction on the first floor?
Yes, we're gonna, we already made, did a demo, so...
Have you, you already started the demo?
Yes, so we have all the...
Are you going down to studs? Are you going right down to studs?
Yes.
So you're redoing the entire building?
Yes.
Inside and out?
Yes.
Electrical, the whole nine yards, heating?
Yes, everything.
So you pulled the demo permit already or not yet?
No, we, we did.
I'm sorry?
We did.
Yeah. So you're putting new first floor flooring, too? So you're taking right down to the foundation?
No, I don't know.
Other joists.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at all the details, so...
The floors were all warped down there.
Are you doing new floor joists?
Yes.
On the first floor? So are you doing any new decking on the property?
Uh, no.
So what, so you don't need the deck that runs into the garage? Why would you need a deck that runs into the garage?
It's already there.
That deck's falling down.
That deck's falling down. Why would it be there?
I've been on it. That's definitely falling down.
There's no reason to have a deck going into a two-car garage when you don't need it.
No, some of those garage joists are also...
Here's my concern, okay? I looked at your floor plan. You've got a massive office, a 10-by-11 or 10-by-12 office, that can easily be turned into a bedroom. We're not doing that. We're not going to do that. So, and I know that it was probably intentional that you went down this road because we're not giving you anything more than a two-bedroom each floor. So when you raise that roof line, you can raise the roof line and then put the roof back on and then you've corrected your ceiling height. You have four rooms up there and two bedrooms and a kitchen and a bath. So why would you make it bigger if you're not looking to add another bedroom?
Okay, I understand.
Are you, are you using...
Do you have any recommendations on how we would manage that?
Well, you, you, I just, I don't understand why it's, you want it so big when you're really trying to get ceiling height, ceiling height in the, in the second floor. And then you've got a deck that's running into a second story of a one-and-a-half-story garage that's not needed.
That deck is dangerous. We both know that. The railings are falling off of it. The raft is in the garage are broken.
What do you call it?
Ceiling rafters.
Yeah, I want to...
You can eliminate this wall. This all becomes...
Is that bedroom in the front, when you come up the front stairs inside the house? Is that bedroom on the left now empty?
This room should be eliminated.
Use it?
Yeah, just eliminate this one.
You come in the house, up the front stairs.
Yes, two stories.
To the left is a room.
Two bedrooms in each floor.
So you've got to be using that as one bedroom, correct?
Neither of them need five.
They don't need this room.
First floor?
Second floor.
Second floor.
I know you didn't take the room out, it's still there.
So let me ask you a question. And Mr. Pine brought up a good reason. Can you come over here, please? You don't need, this is not going to happen. This is, so you can eliminate this right here and you make this bedroom bigger. Or you can make this all bedroom and then this bedroom, remove the lines and make one bedroom here and one bedroom here, but not this. You know what I mean? Well, that's, the architect could certainly do that, right? So I, I mean, it just makes a lot of sense. Now, this is the second floor. What's the first floor?
How many bedrooms on the first floor today?
Two and two.
So there's two bedrooms on the first?
First and two bedrooms on the second. So the first floor, same thing. They added, you added another room.
Is that the first?
That's the first floor. This is the second floor.
So...
Same thing.
Same, same thing.
Right, same configuration.
Same thing.
Eliminate that. All right, so I think what we're going to do, and again, I want my opinion from other board members. So John, you know, Dave is suggesting that both first floor and second floor, the offices get totally eliminated and then the other two bedrooms become bigger and reframe them bigger. That's what his suggestion is. Clearly, we don't need a deck going into the second story of a garage. That's just going to create living space and we don't need that. And then there's a shed on the property. Is that in any good condition? The shed in any good condition?
Not, it's not.
Well, it's overtaxed, so that's going to happen.
What if they wanted to just take that room out and make it part of their kitchen area?
Well, they can do that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they just need to have the architect rework both the interior floor plans to eliminate the, the extra rooms on each floor, labeled office, and then rework and make them these bigger. Yeah, that'll work.
So I think we're just basically, if we're going to approve it, we're just limiting it to two bedrooms per floor.
No, but...
No, shouldn't they take it back on the plan?
No, they're going to have to come back and revise. I think they need to revise this. And I think that's what they need to do. Who's the architect in there? Oh, this is Martin Design, okay. I know him, okay. Yeah, so you want to just continue it to the next hearing and get it revised?
They have to.
They have to do design and continue it till then and then...
Yeah, so we'll continue this hearing till next month. Get our friend over there, what's his first, what's his first name? Yeah, I, I know him.
Explain to them it's either two bedrooms or a big living area.
Right, correct. So what we'll do is we're going to either make two bigger bedrooms. You can make this bathroom, of course, bigger and then this will get eliminated totally. So, and that'll be on both floors. So these, these rooms will no longer be there and you can expand these rooms. So we'll have the architect revise these floor plans and then you come back next month. And then once we see those plans, we'll sign off on them and then we're good to go. All right? Also, probably eliminate the, eliminate this. You can put a second form of egress. This, this, this here gets eliminated into here and you can just cut it off and this deck will be the second form of egress coming down. But I can explain that to them anyways, Joe. All right?
I'm going to write on these plans and give it to them.
Okay, so when's our next hearing? This is this one? That's our floor. When's our next hearing, you think?
November 9.
November 9, okay. Yeah, and then, then this, on this site plan, I'll keep it here, but we're just going to, we're just going to take it right off. This will be the egress coming from the second floor, so it won't be tied into the garage. I think this is going to need to get removed, but we'll address it when you come back. All right, so what is the date?
November 9.
November 9, you come back with the revised plans.
I have one quick question. There's existing stairs going to second floor, but the railings, it's old. I like to keep it all the time, but it's kind of too low.
Yeah, it's not, doesn't meet code. You're going to have to conform to all the code.
You're talking inside the house?
Yes.
All the, you're going to have to...
I don't think, I don't know if that's allowed, David. But that's up to the building commissioner.
The building commissioner, when you go down this road...
They are pretty.
Once you go beyond that 30% of structural, of changes on the building assessed value, they're going to have to conform to all the new code. So the building commissioner is going to let you know what you can do and can't do.
But they are pretty.
Yeah, they are. So, but the building commissioner will let you know on what needs to happen with that. If you can keep them or if you can't keep them.
Yeah, I like to keep it.
Yeah, I'm sure. They're beautiful. Yeah, but he'll let you know if you can keep them. Maybe you have to, I just don't know from a code standpoint what he'll require. Okay? So we'll see you back here on the 9th. Why don't you come in and write it, he'll be the first one on the docket probably, right? Okay, what I'm going to need you to do, we're going to continue this, so you're going to need to sign this. But we're continuing it. So this is going to be, this is going to be a period of, what is it, November 9?
Yes.
11/9/23, today's date. 11/9/23, today's date is the moved.
Before he signs it, do we have to make a motion to continue?
Yes, yep. So is that a motion?
Yes.
A motion to continue this until November 9th, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark, all those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. So do me a favor, Mr. Lima, if you could, sign here and print below. And then you can take a picture of that, so you have it.
I'm gonna take a picture.
We have one more? Yeah, we have one more.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we'll see you, we'll see you on November 9th. Thanks so much. Okay, and with that, we do have a request to continue. This came in from Attorney Burton Ozzy, I believe he's been ill. This is the office's counsel to the petitioner Veronica Camara in connection with the above reference matter, which is the 7 Florence Street. And that has been scheduled for a hearing of October 12 at 7:15. For the early communications, from my office, I tested positive for COVID and I'm in a quarantine. As such, unable to be for the scheduled hearing. Request that this is hereby made and the hearing to be continued to the zoning board appeals for the November hearing date. With that, do I have a motion to continue to November 9th?
Motion.
Motion by John Mustrian, seconded by Dave. All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. And otherwise, I think we're done, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by John Mustrian to adjourn, a second by John Dackney, all those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you for joining us everyone tonight, have a good night.